Let's call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Should I just speak loudly enough?
Yeah, we don't have...
The Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
He has an excused absence.
Doug Sashow.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Lynn Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
So, everybody knows we have to speak up because we don't have any microphones in here tonight.
I'm told that the people at home can hear us probably, but just, yeah, for the audience, for everybody in the back corner.
We're going to be yelling at the poor people.
Yeah, they already know what we're going to say.
First item on our agenda is a presentation and possible action on a community event application for the Fort Morgan High School regarding homecoming activities. Mr. Brendan.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is something that we did for the first time last year after the Legion Field property was annexed into the city. It involves a carnival for homecoming, which is actually going to be on September 19th, which could also be referred to as tomorrow. The school is only asking for... Last year, they had to do a... They had a bonfire during this carnival on Wednesday night, and then requested fireworks during halftime, I believe, of the football game on Saturday or Friday. They have decided against the fireworks this year, so they're just having the carnival and the bonfire, which will be held in the area between the baseball fields, kind of the eastern end of the parking lot, on the other side of the football field, kind of. Fire chief is here. He will be... The fire department will be heavily involved in the bonfire issues. They'll be standing by and ready to... And the fire chief will also retain the authority to call it off if conditions warrant, you know, strong winds or whatever, red flag warnings or whatever. So, we're asking for approval of this community event application for homecoming carnival and bonfire.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
In an effort to be very not popular, is... Do we have a guideline for timing of these? I know this will come out as harsh, but having something come over council the night before gives no time for really in-depth thought process on things. I mean, I guess we would expect events that were waiving fees. I get we're not waiving fees, but weren't. In theory, I guess we could be incurring fees, but not the fire department. It's just, while I think it's, you know, it's a worthy option, I think, I don't know.
We do have guidelines. I believe it's 60 days in advance for a community event application is what we generally request, but we try to be as accommodating as possible, you know, when things come in late.
This is year two of...
I believe last year was the first year when it was actually annexed into the city, so...
And I know, it's a new thing. I would just ask, you know, however this comes out tonight, that if we're going to do something like this in the future, that we just get this on our agenda further than the next day?
It's for the kids.
Okay. That doesn't mean we can't be proactive, that we knew homecoming was coming.
So, anybody else?
I'd like to add, I worked at last year. The fire department did an excellent job. Staff from the high school, I thought, well-run and very safe, so kudos to you guys from last year, so.
With that, there's no other questions or comments. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the community event application from Fort Morgan High School for their homecoming.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries 6-0 with Councilmember Marler being absent.
Make sure I get the right one. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance changing the zoning designation of lands within the city of Fort Morgan, Colorado, and general business B2 to mixed-use B1 for the said purpose, revising and supplementing the zoning district map of the said city. This is a public hearing. Keep public comments to the issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines and otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Dunn, has it been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor. A legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on August 29.
Next is presentation of the ordinance. Mr. Glamire.
All right, thank you. Good evening. What you have in your packet tonight is case 18-020. This is a rezone of property located in the city of Fort Morgan. It's three lots in the same block. It's currently zoned B1 mixed-use business, and the applicant would like to take that zoning to B2 general business. The properties contain a warehouse, some storage units, and a residential home. Currently, the storage units are actually legally non-conforming per our code. This would bring that use into conformity. This change would also bring the home into a non-conformancy issue, to the point that they would have to request a special use permit or some other mechanism to be able to replace that. I don't believe they have any intent to do that in the future. In fact, I think the applicant would desire to actually expand the storage use business, and this would allow us to do that in this instance. We did take this case to the Planning Commission at their regular meeting on September the 10th, and they did unanimously approve this and recommend approval to you all tonight. You have the criteria for rezoning in your packet. I've tried to articulate where we've met all of those criteria. The applicants also provided a burden of proof, and I know the applicant and their representative is here tonight. They may have some additional comments they'd like to make. Staff finds that all of the applicable requirements have been met and supports the application and would ask for your approval tonight of this case. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of me.
So, when you have to speak up... So, when you said that it makes the storage units conforming, but it makes the residents non-conforming?
Correct.
Does that mean they can occupy that as a house?
It can continue to operate until such time as it doesn't, and then they would have to remove the conformity at that point.
I guess I'm not... Maybe I'm just not understanding.
It can continue to be occupied until it's not.
It's grandfathered.
Right. It's grandfathered, that's...
So, until they sold it, or...
Until that use ceases to exist.
Okay. So, if they decided they wanted to change it into a duplex?
I don't believe that would be allowed in this zone. I'd have to look at the...
Right, but I guess I'm just trying to understand. So, if it's non-conforming, then... Please don't help me.
Yeah. So, to answer your question, it can continue to be used as a home if they turned it into an office space, if they turned it into a retail space, if they did anything different than a home, or if the home were to fall apart or burn down, they can't replace it as a home. So, it's allowed to continue to operate as a home indefinitely, so long as it's not changed or destroyed.
So, it's kind of like some of our signs, correct? Where if the sign falls down, it's a non-conforming sign, and the sign falls down, you can't put it back? Is that kind of... Okay.
Except for the fact that residential homes are allowed in this zone by special use. So, they would have to come in and ask for a special use permit in order to reconstruct the home or continue the use, so...
But most of the property, if I understood this correctly and read it correctly, most of this property is being used as a non-conforming business function?
Right. That they would not be allowed to rebuild or anything other... Without a variance.
Right.
Yep, without this change.
I want to make sure I understood.
Yep. It's a good question.
Any other questions for Mr. Glamire? Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue?
Good evening, Council. I'm Raymond M. Laws here on behalf of my client, Les Linker, and Butch Spiker of B&amp;B Company LLC. Mr. Glamire kind of spoke to the non-cumulative criteria that apply to any rezoning application, and, you know, I'll keep this brief, but just to run through some of those criteria. The first is whether the land proposed for rezoning is changed such that it is in the public interest to change the zoning designation. These lots have been used in a commercial manner for many years, but in 2007, 29 storage units were erected on a portion of lots 1 through 6 after the city issued a construction permit. So, at that time, it was B1. A construction permit was issued anyways, and now we have this non-conforming use. Obviously, this is the most valuable portion of the property to my client, B&amp;B Storage. You know, if these were... If we were to suffer a casualty loss or something like that, they wouldn't even be able to apply for a special use permit to rebuild, and that's really the impetus behind this. You know, it's... I guess as far as public policy is concerned, it's truly not in the public interest to allow construction of a business that, you know, if a loss was to be suffered, it couldn't be rebuilt. You know, that just wouldn't be... If the city adopted that policy uniformly, that would drive away business. Criteria number two is that the proposed rezoning is needed to provide land for a demonstrated community need. I believe the staff spoke to this at the P&amp;Z hearing, but, you know, it sounds like the city has gotten multiple applications for storage units. It is something that any community needs, and I think there is a serious need for these here in Fort Morgan. Criteria number three is that the existing zoning classification is an error. You know, the current use of the property is not in conformance with B1 mixed-use, and by changing the zoning, we would be going from an error to something more in conformance with what it's actually being used as. The fourth and final criteria is whether the proposed rezoning is in conformance or will bring the property into conformance with the comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and policies, and other related policies or plans for the area. Here, I would note that the two definitions for B1 and B2, the B2 zoning designation definition is that the purpose of the B2 general business district is to provide a zoning district for the location of commercial uses typically oriented along major thoroughfares, and that's exactly what we have here. I mean, Riverview Avenue is a major thoroughfare, primarily dedicated to commercial uses. There are at least three other properties designated as B2 along the avenue, and that does not include the Sugar Beet Factory, which is not in the city, obviously, and is a major commercial and industrial enterprise. The definition of B1 is that it's... The purpose of a B1 mixed-use business district is to provide a zoning district for those commercial and residential uses that complement one another in such a way as to provide a pleasant living experience in a predominantly downtown business environment. You know, here, we are not downtown. We're on kind of the edge of town, and it truly seems like the use on these lots fits more well under B2 than B1. I believe that, you know, taking all this together, we've met our burden of proof, which is that we need to demonstrate that the land in question should be rezoned, and that the advantages resulting from rezoning would outweigh any disadvantages that would result. Speaking to any potential disadvantages, these lots face Riverview, so we're not really changing anything on the side streets, which are primarily residential. Duel is... We're on the corner of Riverview and Duel. There's not going to be suddenly a new commercial use in a residential neighborhood by doing this. In addition, you know, the increased use in B2, these lots are too small to do a lot of the B2 things that you can do, so, you know, there's... In B2, you're allowed to do a retail or service business that's greater than 25,000 square feet. Well, that simply wouldn't fit in the size of these lots. So, there's really very minimal to no disadvantages to going down this route, and I think just to really bring this into conformance, that this is the way to go. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Laws, would you mind signing the public comment sheet there? I know you're speaking on behalf of the applicant, but it's kind of under the public comment section. This is kind of a hybrid-type hearing. Thanks.
Seeing none, I would ask the clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
None were received.
Now, we'll proceed to council discussion. Are there any questions or discussion from council? It appears to me that the building permit was issued, and they built it, which put it out of compliance. So, now, we're zoning it to where it should be, and then the out of compliance will now be the house, which can be corrected by a special use permit. So, I guess in my view, it's probably going from one error to a lesser error in correcting an issue. So, does anybody else have any comments or questions? If there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No.
Second. I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Legal action. Jason Myers?
All right, so I won't restate what Mr. Laws has already provided, the different criteria for council to consider. If you believe that the applicant has fulfilled their duty and those criteria have been met, then you should vote to approve this. If you believe that they have not been, then you should vote to deny this.
I would entertain a resolution, accepting or denying...
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving first reading of ordinance number 1220, recommending for case number 18-020Z0, a rezoning from B1 mixed-use business to B2 general business.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously. Allison C. Howe.
Thanks, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance changing the zoning designation of lands within the city of Fort Morgan, Colorado, from general business B2 to mixed-use business B1, and for the said purpose, revising and supplementing the zoning district map of said city. Once again, this is a public hearing, and the same requirements as the last one will be enforced on this. First is a legal notice. Mrs. Dunn, was it properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor. A legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on August 29.
Next presentation of the ordinance. Mr. Glamire.
Okay, so I guess we went B1 to B2, so we're going to go B2 to B1 on this one. This one's pretty exciting. This is an entire block that's just on the other side of Main Street here from City Hall that's currently zoned B2, and they'd like to take that block to B1. This fits exactly with the future land use plan and meets criteria that staff really supports. The applicant would like to bring, again, some existing uses into full conformity. They have a special use permit for residences above some of their shops, and this would actually bring that into full compliance where they wouldn't need a special use permit. And then, some of the other property owners on this block would like to look into that avenue for housing as well, and we really like that. This is the perfect mix of live, work, play, where we have folks that live upstairs, of businesses that they own downstairs, right downtown. So, we're pretty excited about this application. Every property owner signed in agreement that they wanted to do the entire block. That makes this very easy for us. The Planning Commission also heard this at their September 10th meeting and approved this unanimously as well. You have the criteria and the burden of proof from the applicant. The applicant's representative is here tonight if you have questions of her, but staff fully supports this case as well and would ask for your approval tonight. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
This just kind of brings our zoning map into compliances, housekeeping.
It really does, yep. Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on the issue?
I think that meant no.
Seeing none, I would ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this meeting.
No, Your Honor.
Council discussion. Are there any questions for council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No.
Second. I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Counsel action. Mr. Myers.
All right, same as before. If you feel those criteria have been met, then you should proceed with approval. If you believe that has not been met, then you should not approve it.
I would entertain a resolution approving or denying ordinance... First reading of the ordinance.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving first reading of ordinance number 1221 for case 18-021Z0, a rezoning from B2 general business to B1 mixed-use business for an entire block in the downtown area.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Next is presentation of possible action authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with ALO Communications for splicing of the fiber. Mr. Nation.
Good evening. What you have in front of you tonight, when we entered into our long-term agreement with ALO Communications, we had several conversations about the need and the necessity to splice cable, the fiber cable into the future, and we had that written into our agreement, and so that's covered because of the... As I stated in my memo, it becomes kind of a quality issue with your network. If you've got good splices and everything, it's more reliable and better comfort level, and so that's why ALO wanted that control into the future. When we got into the build, we realized that we were having them splice fiber, but we didn't have an agreement actually to cover their services for what they were doing currently. So, after talking with Jason, we thought we'd better just go ahead and get a quick contract put together for them. So, what they're doing and the number that you have in front of you, that is actually just their cost for the splicing. There's no markup or anything associated with that. It goes into the total cost of the project, which they will then pay back over time, and so there's no reason for them to mark the price up or anything, but once we had plans finalized and they could sit down and figure out what it was going to cost, this is what we have. And so, just looking for approval on that contract and let the mayor sign that services agreement with ALO so we can make it all official for the splicing. Any questions?
I just want to say, awesome job, but still coming under budget. I saw that in the moment, I was...
Yes, every time...
I stood up and cheered at home.
Yeah, every time I talked to Doug, and that's why he's here, is to make sure he can nod when I say, yes, we're still under budget and everything's looking good that way. It'll be... It'll be close, but it's... Everything's shooting for under budget right now, so...
Thanks, Brent.
Good job. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with ALO for splicing of fiber.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation of possible action approving a change order in the contract for a fiber installation with Bauer Underground. Mr. Nation.
Okay. I mentioned, it's been several weeks ago or several meetings ago, that we would have a change order with Bauer. When we went out to bid on this project, which was back in February, we didn't have the finalized plans for any of our bidders to work from, so we basically put this bid package together that was very generalized. It was just this many lineal feet of aerial, this many lineal feet of underground, this much tie-in, and we put some generic fiber counts in there and sizes of the devices that they tied together and everything. And so, we had kind of a base bid for everybody, so we were getting competitive bids from all of the bidders, but we knew that once the plans were finalized, there was going to be a lot of changes that would affect their bid numbers. And some of that is, is that there's areas that were... Doug's crews have had to go in and assess whether we can stay aerial, and we've gone extra underground in some places, and then we've had to do different changes with the number of boxes, you know, the handholds we're putting in the ground, and there's all kinds of things that have been fine-tuned. And so, I knew the change order was going to be significant, but it was part of the way that we did this bid so we can make sure that it was going to be done yet this year. And so, we've worked with Bauer all summer. We finally got the last final plans here just back in August on the multiple dwelling units, and so we made sure that Bauer had all of the final numbers put together. Bauer's very confident that these numbers will carry them through the end of the build, and so that's why this will be the only change order that I bring in front of you on this. At least, that's my hope. And so, this should get us through the end of construction and get everything buttoned up with Bauer's construction portion of our network. And so, tonight, I'm asking for approval for a change order with Bauer in an amount not to exceed $450,000.
I would entertain action.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve and accept the change order for the fiber network construction from Bauer Underground in an amount not to exceed $450,000.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
You're right, you do spend a lot of money. Presentation of possible action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an on-call consulting agreement with CWA Consulting. an on-call consulting agreement with CWA Consulting Services LLC related to the city's pre-treatment program for industrial users of the wastewater treatment system. Mr. Brennan, or Mr. Nation.
That works. So what you have in front of you tonight is an agreement with a specialized consultant. City of Fort Morgan really hasn't added any industrial customers onto our system in almost 10 years. And so now that we're needing to have some extra eyes on things, we wanted to make sure that we had the right person brought aboard. CWA Consulting, the gentleman that we're working with is Kurt McCormick. We've used his services before when we've had to redo some of our local limits and other things at the plant. He specializes in this type of work. He is well-known in the area, and I think Ron can attest to this. He used to actually work for the EPA, so he's very familiar with what has to be done to make sure that we stay in compliance. And so we're just looking to get him on kind of our standard services agreement so we can use him as we need him and not have to bounce back and forth with you guys. And so this money will just come out of the engineering and consulting line item of the wastewater fund. So we're just looking for authorization for the mayor to sign the services agreement with CWA.
I'd have him onboard so you can get the answers, especially if it's an economic development type thing in the future.
Absolutely.
You don't have to wait.
Yep.
We're not hindering progress.
Absolutely.
He's probably one of the best, so. He used to do enforcement.
Yeah.
That's how I got to know him. So I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an on-call consulting agreement with CWA Consulting Services LLC related to the city's pre-treatment program for industrial users of the wastewater treatment system.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will be back in shortly.
Don't threaten us that way.
Next is presentation and possible action on a resolution authorizing additional funding for the old higher police pension plan in 2018 and 2019. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. This is another one that we do every couple of years, sometimes every year, depending on the timing. Our old higher police pension plan has three members. We currently pay somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 and change a year. Every two years, we get an actuarial report, and they give us the information on how much additional the city would need to contribute for a 1%, 2%, or 3% cost-of-living adjustment for the members in that plan. And so the timing of that, it comes halfway through the year usually. And so now we've got the actuarial study for 2018 and 19, so this one resolution will give them their cost-of-living adjustment retroactive for 2018 and then going forward for 2019. The members of the plan did request a 3% COLA. The members of the board voted in favor of a 2%. And the members of the plan subsequently voted to approve that, so that's what we're proposing, is a 2% increase. And that is, I know it's in here somewhere, roughly $9,000, I think, additional. I could be wrong on that.
Seventy-four, seventy-eight, things like that.
Yeah, it's actually, I think about $6,600, yeah. The $9,000 is the monthly payments, but, for the total, but, so it's about $6,800 to increase the 2%.
Any questions?
I just have one, 'cause I'm still new at this. In the resolution language, it has for 2018 and 2019. Did you already answer why it's bundled that way, or it's just 'cause the actuarial studies is just every two years?
Right, exactly. So, and we're, we'll give it retro to January 1st of 2018, so to get them caught up, and then on January 1st of 2019, they'll get another 2%. And so these dollar figures are the two 2% increases bundled together.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
And we'll be back doing this again about the same time in 2020.
In 2020, yeah, presumably. I think last year, for some reason, we had to do it twice because of, yeah.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Any other questions? Would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing additional funding for the old higher police pension plan for 2018 and 2019.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Mr. Brennan. Next is a presentation and possible action on a resolution expressing the city of Fort Morgan's support of the Northern Integrated Supply Project. Mr. Nation. Long time no see.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's been a while. So this is one of these that I brought up once before. We have now moved into this stage in this process that we make some of us extremely excited, but for those that have been working on it, like some of the Northern staff, this has been a long time in coming. And so with the release of the final environmental impact, you know, statement and the process that we've gone through, Northern has requested, and I think it's, would be very good for us to do, is to enter into this type of resolution showing our continued support for this project. It'll just be recorded with all the other comments that go in with the final on this, and then the Corps will actually go through, and the way it's been explained to me is they actually go through an index and keep track of everybody's comments, and when they do all of their final paperwork, there will be a reference to the fact that something like this was filed, and it either had concerns or they acknowledged the fact that it was submitted for their review. And so this is the type of thing that's just good if, you know, this is indeed where the city still feels we need to be going. At staff level, we definitely feel that this is definitely the direction the city needs to be going and continuing our support with this project. We are at that point to where we're hoping that this final on the environmental means that we're within about 12 months of having a record decision on the project. And that's, that's that big piece of paper that comes out that everybody says, now we can start discussing construction. And so, so we're getting close. And so I'm hoping tonight that this is something that you agree with me is important to the city and that we need to continue to support, so. It is in front of you for your review and your vote, and I appreciate Jason's efforts on this. I gave him a bunch of notes, and this was the masterpiece that came out of those, those notes, and I thank him for that, so. Any questions?
I agree with you. We need to support this. We've been in it for a long time, since the beginning, so.
Yep.
And this is just, to me, NISP is what CBT, NISP is for councils of this era, what CBT was for councils previously, and this is just us being, having the foresight to plan for the future and what it may not be something that impacts a lot of, a lot of us in the short term. It's planning and setting our city in a place that we need to be for future generations, so.
Absolutely.
We need to be in favor of this.
I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution expressing the city of Fort Morgan's support for the Northern Integrated Supply Project.
Second. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
We're in.
Thank you very much. Once I have the signed resolution, I'll submit that to the Corps of Engineers on behalf of the city, but thank you very much.
Thanks.
It's time to start buying shovels, huh? Getting ready to put some shovels in the ground. Next on the agenda is 2019 budget calendar. This will be the conclusion of the presentations for the 2019 general fund budgets and the miscellaneous funds, and to review our schedule of fees. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. This'll conclude our budget presentations for the year. We've got a few general fund departments left to cover, as well as a few miscellaneous smaller funds. We've heard of the fund department, but we've got some other fund departments on tap tonight. We've got golf and rec and some good stuff, so. I think first is Jenny Elrich.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Good evening. I brought a copy of my budget with me, but I really don't need it because I've not made a single change. I'm not requesting any increase or decrease in funds. You know my department's been through a bit of a transition this year, and so really what I'm asking is just for another year, another opportunity, to grant me what you've given in the past and really try and get ahead of things and move forward. I'm hoping that you can ask me some good questions about what's happening in my department. Maybe.
I really appreciated the quarterly reports that are coming out now to us. That's super helpful, so thanks for following through with that.
Well, and I feel like it gives you a better understanding of what I'm doing throughout the year, and so maybe for that reason, you won't have as many questions, but I do have plans that I continue to update you with, and we'll have some exciting developments next year.
So by leaving everything the same, do you feel it's all sufficient for what you're gonna need to accomplish for the upcoming year?
I do. I do. Having kind of taken over this department this year and analyzing the budget on my own, I know I've been conservative, and so next year I plan to really dig into what we can spend some of those economic development funds on, and so I feel like it's very sufficient.
And I just wanna say that Jenny has done a great job under some kind of difficult circumstances. She was hired by the previous director and wasn't very long before he left the city, so Jenny was kind of left on her own. She's had a lot of support and help from the other staff, but she's really taken on the challenge and kept things rolling in that department.
Yes.
Thank you.
She does have a get-her-done attitude. That's appreciated.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Elrich? Innovations.
Yes, as far as my department being innovative, I feel like we're perpetually looking at best practices, which is in and of itself kind of an innovation. I will continue to get education next year to become a certified economic developer, and part of those requirements, and I know it's not been in one of my quarterly reports, but part of those requirements is to have four years of experience working economic development, along with the requisite education. And so this year, I took Economic Development Finance and passed the written exam. I also took the Basic Economic Development Course and got the certificate for that. So next year, I will continue that education, along with really developing the relationships within the community. I've got a very good information sharing program with the Workforce Center, and so just really trying to utilize the resources I have in this community has been something I've been focused on.
Very good.
So, thank you.
Keep up some good work.
Thank you.
Steve.
Steve.
Good evening, council. In regards for budget for, for the rec department, there are just a few minor changes, which are good minor changes. Most of these are showing of growth and interest in recreation, so just a couple of things I wanted to point out for a couple of requests. First off, we're looking at a potential, if possible, increase in our special event expense budget. The majority of this budget is used for our summer concert series, which has been a successful series, Thursday nights at City Park. Our interest in requesting this is to increase our opportunities for this summer concert series to entice bigger names and bigger bands into our facility, so we feel an extra $2,000 would help bring in some bigger bands, hopefully draw a couple of crowds. We have some fan favorites. I keep hearing about Buckstein and how awesome they are, and everybody loves them, and we'd like to generate that more with more bands coming in and generate more excitement. And just a couple other, just three other ones. In regards to our fall program, our soccer program, which I, for some reason, on my notes, didn't show an increase, but we were just looking for a small increase on the Optimist Soccer Program. Those two, we're looking at small increases of about $500 to $1,000 because of increase of participation, which is a great, great issue to have. Our soccer program is our biggest program by far. We do that in the springtime. I don't know if you have the opportunity to go down to JC Park, but it is full from about 8:00 AM in the morning till about 3:00 PM in the afternoon. It just filled with soccer. And as we continue to draw more children into our soccer programs, of course, we're gonna need more money to buy uniforms, buy equipment, and so forth. Same with our fall program. We're starting to see more and more increase in our flag football and volleyball program, which is going on right now. Last, last change, which is a big one, is our senior center trips budget. Currently, it's listed at $3,000. Request is to $8,000. Big reason why is because the seniors want to go on trips, and they wanna go on big trips. In May, we went on a trip to Deadwood, South Dakota for a weekend. That alone used about $4,000. The good news about that, though, is it was completely covered, with the exception of the host's cost, which was about $200. Everything else was completely covered by the registration fees by the seniors. So we see that as the seniors wanna go on trips and bigger trips and nicer trips, and they're willing to pay for said trips. So just, so that, in that case, everything is being covered by the seniors, and they're willing to pay more money, and we just need more money in our, our budget to take care of that, so. Any questions you may have?
Pretty straightforward. Like to see the growth in the rec department. Good job.
Thank you, thank you.
So Steve, is that enough for those growing programs for the fall, the football and volleyball and soccer?
I feel so. I feel that's gonna, as, if you look, especially with soccer, Optimist Soccer Program, I forgot to put a change, but I think about $1,000 there. If you look at our expenses this year, we went over budget by about 600, or what is that? About, about 13. So about $1,300, we went over budget. We'll be able to weigh that out with other places where we're doing okay in for this year, but I think a little bit, just about $1,000, we should be fine, so.
Innovations.
Innovations. So first off, when I first got here, I was learning about our summer programming. Summertime is always a busy time for recreation, and one of our big programs that we run is a tennis clinic or a tennis camp, which is run by one of our coordinators, Colby, Colby Whaler. Colby doesn't know very much about tennis. He was kind of thrown into that, and when I first got here, we talked a little bit about it, and he said, "I, I can do it, but I don't feel I'm offering the greatest opportunity for our, for our residents." So when I think of innovation, I think of improvement, I think of better quality, I think more efficient. So we started brainstorming, and we went, "Well, why don't we work with the school district on this?" So we contacted the high school's tennis coach. We, we worked something out, and what we ended up doing was we had the tennis coach run our program. Her and her girls came in and they ran the program. We took care of the administrative side, registrations, handling money, ordering t-shirts for the kids, making sure equipment's taken care of, and then they ran the program, and we worked a deal where so much of the revenue, or so much of the fees, excuse me, would go towards the Fort Morgan High School tennis program.
Nice.
So therefore, it's a win-win for everybody. The parents are happy because they're So therefore, it's a win-win for everybody. The parents are happy because they're being coached by the tennis coach and the girls, so it's a better quality program. We're happy because we know it's a better program. Money's been giving to, back to the school district that they can improve their tennis program. It's ultimately a better program for everybody. And it builds a better relationship with the school district, which is something we are constantly wanting to do, is build a better relationship with the schools. So in the future, different innovation things we would like to do is we'd like to continue to do that, as well as different sport camps and programs, especially in the summertime. We do a lot of summer leagues and spring and fall leagues. We do flag football and baseball and T-ball, structured leagues where you're on a team, you play and so forth. But we'd like to get back more in the spirit of recreation with basic fundamentals. So for example, before we start our baseball league, a couple weeks before, we do a two, three-day clinic. Kids come into the Army, or we go out to Riverside Park, and we teach the basics of holding and swinging a baseball bat, throwing and catching, making sure we understand basic fundamentals. That way, they're better prepared for when they are starting practices with our volunteer coaches.
Very good. Are you seeing any increase in your tennis program with this?
I think so. I've, just talking from Colby, where it was at last year and where we've seen this year, I think we've seen a bigger increase in our tennis program, and we'll continue to do so as we establish those relationships with the Fort Morgan tennis team. Just good relationships overall, and win-win for everybody.
There you go.
Something similar with, like pickleball, now that we've got our, you know, nice new pickleball courts?
We, so, so when I first got here, before the courts were finished, we had a pickleball group that was playing at Green Acres. It was still the winter time. They have a group that goes down there and plays.
Sundays and Thursdays?
Yeah, Tuesdays and Thursday. Yeah, you know better than I do. I'm not a big pickleball guy, but, but I know there is an organized group. We probably could do a better job in making sure we market that for individuals who are interested. I do know that there's also equipment out there.
I was just getting ready to blow your horn about that, too, that I thought that that was innovative, to take some paddles and balls for pickleball, since it's new to Fort Morgan essentially, and leave them down at the court and everything. I thought that that was innovative.
Yeah. That, I can't take credit for that. That was not my idea. So, yeah, as much as I would like to. Yeah. But yeah, yeah, we can definitely focus more on that with pickleball and try to organize that. And I know that's a trendful thing, especially for adult recreation and senior recreation.
I have to say, too, I think it was, was it last meeting, you said, I still laugh because you said, "The first thing you learned when you got here was there were two things you weren't supposed to screw up." That was Bob Stock and the Fall Harvest.
And Car Show.
So Bob Stock was, you kicked that one off, and we just finished with Car Show, and it was a success. So I think you're on the right track.
I heard that Christmas or holiday time here is pretty big as well. So I'll make sure not to mess that up, too. And Car Show, but yeah. So, well, it's, you know, it's neat, you know, and just speaking as a relatively new resident here, it's neat to see a lot of, we've had a lot of great community activities that really bind the community together. It's good to see that with a lot of good causes. You know, we've mentioned Bob Stock and the Car Show. We've had things like the Alzheimer's Walk at City Park Suicide Awareness Concert that went on. Just, those two events just happened recently. Other great community events that are really binding for this community. So it's good to see that.
I concur.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamer, this is probably as good a time as any while Ty comes up here. Rather than wait till the reports at the end of the meeting to announce, I notified the council, I believe, through an all-city email, that we took the interim off of Ty's title. He's now the Community Services Director. He's done a really good job since he's been in the interim position, had some great ideas, shown a lot of initiative and worked hard. And so we're proud to have him as our Community Services Director.
Yay.
Congrats.
Your business card got shorter now.
Right. I need to fix it now. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm going to present the Community Services Budget as well as golf for you. Matt is here tonight, but he wanted to see kind of how this works the first time. So, Community Services Budget, I really didn't change anything except for one line item, developmental promotions. I am asking to double that line item from 5,000 to 10,000. This is basically where the majority of the costs for the parties in the parks come from. I kind of learned over time that, I believe, economic development as well as community service was paying for a lot of aspects to the parties in the park. And even this year, Jenny helped pay for a lot of things, the T-shirts, the trinket giveaways, those kind of things. I already blew my budget for this year, so I want to make sure next year we can have a really good party in the park and make sure we have the enough money for it. So that's the one item in my budget. Couple of areas where I feel like the Community Services Department, even before my time, has been very innovative, is really reaching for, searching out different ways to fund some of the projects that we want to do, grant applications, the Tweymore Property, the Trail Plan, GoCo grants. Right now, we're in the process of applying for another GoCo grant for a bike park at Brenda Joy. Even though you guys have approved Conservation Trust money, I'm hoping to get a grant to help cover that. So that's one area we're working on. One of the big probably innovations moving forward, doesn't have to do with technology or anything. It more has to do with communication and how I work with my department heads. One of the big things that I've started since I've been here is weekly meetings with Doak and Steve and Matt and Chandra. We get together and we talk about upcoming events and what's going to happen. Just recently, we took it a step forward and kind of, some of you went to the Innovation, what is it, Sustainivation class that we went to, and I took that a little bit into our department head meetings. And we basically threw ideas up on the wall, you know, way out of the ballpark ideas to more realistic ideas. And then we're going to start prioritizing those and kind of come up with a plan to do more for our community. So I think that's a little bit of an innovative approach to how we manage those departments. So that's Community Services for you. Any question?
With the youth commission, I just have been in conversations with a couple other community groups that have also talked about developing youth commissions. So it's just another area to collaborate. And I can follow up with you with email, but Fort Morgan Cultures United for Progress and Kids at Their Best have had internal conversations. And we were at a meeting the other day, and a youth commission came up. So I know if there's
I've been trying to get in touch with Greg Edson on the youth commission and get a follow-up on that. And we're at a little bit of a stalled state right now. I'm hoping it all still pans out the way we had planned, and I'm hoping to utilize them in a lot of the process with this GoCo grant and the bike park.
Cool, yeah.
Either using them to do surveys, to get kids involved, or to possibly use the youth group that's being formed to help form another group of actual riders and skaters that may come for a community build. My idea is hopefully to get the kids involved when we actually purchase the ramps and that kind of thing and get them out there to help with the design. Our crew will, right now, the plan is our crew will do the dirt work, will clear the weeds, will level the ground. And then I'm hoping to actually have a company that knows what they're doing come in for installation, or at least do a supervised installation. So if that all pans out, hopefully we'll have a group of kids that can show up one day and actually be there in the beginning to find out where the jumps are going to be and have some input in it. That's one idea with the youth commission. And then, like we talked about earlier, officials, we need officials. So if we can start training these kids through the youth commission on how to officiate sports, it'll be a big positive. I don't have a great update for you right now.
That's okay.
I'm trying.
I know. Yeah, that's, I just know it's kind of, it's a new thing. It's part of innovation for the city. So it's, yeah, still kinks to work out. But thanks for the update.
No, and I think it's, you know, a great idea. I have no plans on not trying to move forward with it. People are just really busy right now. Any other questions?
What I was thinking, as you were saying, I mean, we struggle with the officials thing. I think, you know, some of the innovations that Steve was doing, you know, maybe that's really an avenue to be looking into, I mean, if we were to have a, like what they're doing with the tennis kids, do the same thing with some of our other programs, and that might work into that because they're already involved. So.
Well, and I think any of those programs where we can utilize a sports team from the school, whether it's the baseball team, basketball team, golf team even, we talked about that the other day. I feel like the rec center, you know, I'm looking at things from a, maybe a different angle, being in the golf business for 20 years. Matt and I, you know, we're great at teaching people how to swing a golf club and hit a ball. We're great at junior camps. We're great at adult clinics, that kind of thing. Where the golf business, I feel, has struggled and probably why it's in a little bit of a heartache. And if you think, if you hear, if you watch the PGA commercials during the U.S. Open, everything now is about getting people from the driving range onto the golf course. So clearly, the last 30 years, we have been doing it right. We've been teaching them how to grip, aim, stance, hit the ball. But have we really been teaching that person like yourself to go from hitting a bucket to playing golf? The rec department is great at that. They're great at creating leagues and getting kids out there playing flag football, or playing soccer, or playing Little League Baseball. They're great at the league and the games and recruiting volunteer coaches. So they're not maybe so great at making sure the kids are learning basic fundamentals of the sport they want to play, whether it's dribbling, shooting a basket, a free throw, how to hold a bat, you know, how to hit off the tee. There's very simple fundamentals. So my idea is to try to get a little bit more instructional area in our rec center, as well as possibly utilizing the rec center to help us develop a little bit more playing opportunities for kids and beginners at the golf course. Whether the golf team maybe helps in that area, maybe helps take over junior camps in the future. Either way, if we can get those kids involved, the teenagers, the team sport kids, they're learning mentoring skills by teaching the sport they love to a younger population. They're adding items they can put on their college resume, community service items. So I think, like Steve said, it's a win-win either way. And I think it is a different way to approach this. So.
And you're getting a connection. I mean, some of the younger kids are going to be more connected to one of their high school, the high school kids, because, you know, they're, rather than an adult trying to tell them, you know, we're always telling kids what to do. So.
Well, and you see it every day. The little kids look up to those athletes every day. And you know, the Mustang Baseball Club does a good job because they have so many age groups. The football team does a great job. They do a youth camp already, and most of the players go help with that. If we can take those models and utilize them and work together, it'll make everything better because the school will end up with better equipped kids when they hit middle school and they start going out for sports. You know, the golf course should grow in users. Hopefully pickleball will grow. I mean, that's the idea, right?
And you've already got the innovative staff that already are thinking outside the box. So you guys are well on your way.
Well, and we have a lot of experts. I mean, Colby is a, is very knowledgeable in baseball, basketball. Steve's a football player. I mean, there's a lot of expertise that we can use. So, good. Ready for golf?
Ready.
Ready.
Okay. So first, before I talk about golf, I want to give a shout out to Matt Pickering. Big thank you to Matt. He basically ran the golf course all summer season. I was there off and on to help, but not nearly like I used to be. And the guy was a champ. He really was a rock star up there this year. So.
Congratulations.
Good job.
We have made a few changes, not a whole lot. I'm just going to kind of go down the highlighted columns and try to explain why we are changing them. The first increase was on data processing. This is our POS reservation software or website. You know, we have a deal with Golf Now. So right now, we're not really paying anything, but there may be a time where we want to look at something else, which could come up soon. Our contract with Golf Now is over. We're in a year-to-year deal with them now, so we could make a change at any time. So one of our projects this winter is to try to start looking at some different softwares like T-Snap and some other things. We do pay for a couple of things out of there. Our Toro irrigation system, software, a couple other things get paid out of there. But we raised it just in case we were going to make a change on the POS system. Stay and Play Hotel Packages, this is very similar to your senior trips. It fluctuates, and it's all based on the revenue that comes in. I think it was 2017, we had one great big group, 16 guys that played 36 holes a day for three days in a row. That didn't come because it rained so much that May, is it May when those guys come? So we had a huge rainstorm last year. They didn't come. Well, they came this year. We ended up lowering Stay and Play for 2017. Now we've blown the budget because those guys came and they booked so many rooms. So again, that's the expense where we pay the hotels for their rooms, but they're paying us for their room plus their golf and all that. So there's a revenue that offsets. But Jeannie advised us to try to budget what we think is going to be coming through those line items. Maintenance equipment and vehicle maintenance, we're asking to increase that to 25,000 from 20. Back in 2017, we got really close and panicked and blew that budget. So we're hoping to have a little bit more room there for equipment maintenance. That's for your bedknives, you know, your reel mowers, all those special items. Sprinkler maintenance, we seem to never spend all of it, so we're going to lower that one. Janitorial services, last year was our, or this year was our first year budgeting for janitorials. So that was a stab in the dark, and we're only using them twice a week. So the number's much lower than what was budgeted, so we can lower it. Grass seed, a couple years ago, I started bumping that up to ensure that Matt Givens had the dollars he needed to order seed, to overseed the bad areas after winter. Golf course is in great shape. It's really, really been good. So I don't think that we're going to be spending that in the future. The license expense, that's our beer and alcohol license, and it was more expensive this year than planned for. So increasing it a little bit to cover that. All in all, much of it's the same. Questions on the budget? And I'll talk about the great things he did to innovate at the golf course.
So was the grass seed, you dropped that in anticipation. You won't need it for?
I'm hoping we're not going to need it in the future. I think Matt Givens has a much better best practices in place as far as surviving the winter. The whole key to having good turf in the springtime is moisture in the wintertime. Last year, we irrigated up till December 23rd or something. So that's kind of our theory now, is we run irrigation as far into the winter as we can, and we shut down when we have to, rather than shutting down earlier. And that really helps the golf course come out in the springtime. And that's the difference right now.
You could order a little bit more snow during the winter. You could order more snow during the winter, and then you wouldn't have.
Honestly, that's the best case, is a good snow cover, not only for the moisture content, but to keep the people off. You do have issues, though, with that when you have freeze and thaw underneath the snow. That's when you get, you hear, you know, winter kill and that term. When you get that thaw under a layer of snow and it freezes really hard, and then it thaws the next day and freezes really hard, that's not good either. But a good 12 inches for two months would be perfect. All right. So a couple of things that the golf course, I think, really did innovative this year, and these are technology-based. Matt Pickering, when he found out that I wasn't going to be around so much and his responsibilities were changing, developed a digital schedule for his employees. Basically uses a Google Calendar to create a schedule, and then he's able to share that calendar with all the seasonals so that people can check right on their phone while working. I think it worked out pretty good for you, hopefully. Right. The other thing that Matt Givens has done in his shop, you know, in the old school days, the golf course maintenance, you had a work board, you had a dry erase board, and you wrote down job duties, and maybe you marked down which way you're cutting greens today and so forth. Well, that's become digital in our maintenance shop now. We've got a flat-screen TV. Matt Givens uses an application from his phone that's called a to-do list, so he can add job assignments for each individual, things that need to be done today, things that need to be done tomorrow, et cetera, and soeter. The cool part is now, if Matt Givens is on the golf course, maybe he's The cool part is now, if Matt Givens is on the golf course, maybe he's touring around with Pickering, trying to figure out, you know, where they need to go, what they need to do, what did they forget to do. He can actually update his work list from his phone. It'll pop up on the screen in the, in the employee room, and say, another employee has done mowing rough. He comes in at 11 o'clock, he's got a half hour before lunch. He can look on the board and see if there's been any jobs added and be more productive that way and get stuff done, rather than going out to find Matt Givens to find out what to do next, so. I think that's pretty neat. We're moving forward next year, expanding on the whole idea. Nelson was gracious enough to install Wi-Fi in the maintenance shop. Right now, our maintenance, our mechanic, Terry, uses a program that tracks all the maintenance on, on his vehicles. If he does an oil change on this mower, or hydraulic change on that mower, he's got a program. He inputs that in, and it tracks all the records for each piece of equipment. We're still using human record-keeping, as far as how many hours are on the machine, you know, were there any problems? The seasonals have to report to Terry those items, so that he knows, hey, this machine's coming up for service. Eventually, and it's already included in his program, I believe, now that we have Wi-Fi, one, one thing we can do is add sensors to each machine. As it leaves the building, as it exits, exits the garage door, that starts to track the hours of operation on that machine. When it returns, it shuts it down, and Terry will get updates directly on his program to each, how each machine is being used and how long. And then, when it gets time for a routine service, it'll pop up and let him know. So that's one thing he's looking forward to. Also, having Wi-Fi in the building has enabled him to use a tablet or use his phone to bring up schematics for electrical wiring and so forth, rather than running to his computer and then back out to the machine. He can have it right there for him, so. Those are some pretty cool innovations at the golf course. Any questions? Sorry, I always ramble when I get up here.
When are we putting in some sand traps?
When I retire. I don't like sand traps. Yeah, they're hard to maintain, and there's a lot more to it than digging a hole and putting sand in. You need to have drainage, and you need to have weed control and drainage tiles underneath, and there's all kinds of stuff to it. It just adds labor and hours.
And they attract the ball, absolutely.
I think golf's hard enough already. I don't think we need to make it any harder, personally. Maybe for you, we'll just, well, the kids, they rebuilt the one on the putting green. So if you want, you could just kind of like shank your tee shot on number one into the bunker on, by the putting.
Well, I've done that before, but I didn't know how to play out of it, because we don't have sand anywhere else for me to be practicing.
Good point.
Well, now you have a.
And you know what? It's one of the easiest shots in golf, if you know how to do it right, so. Grab me one day, and I'll show you. It's really not that hard.
Thanks, Ty.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Ty. We have Chief Schultz down next for police forfeiture. It looks like all zeros to me, so I don't know if there's anything we need to cover on that.
Thirty-four thousand. I'll let you.
Okay. Good evening. There wasn't any planned, there is no, yeah, there was no planned expenditures from police forfeiture for, for next year. That doesn't mean that we can't spend anything. We, anything that we would put in here, we would take out of reserve, because police forfeiture builds up, because, is it like we, we get, you tell about?
Well, certain cases, oh, that's right. Certain cases result in forfeiture to the police department, and that fund could possibly grow. We have no plans to expend any funds from that at this point. That may change as the needs of the department change.
Cool.
Well, zero's a good budget.
Yeah. It was easy to put in there. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any innovations in forfeiture? I'm kidding.
Good one.
Fiber network.
Fiber network is also zero, as it is most years. All we're doing in that old fiber fund is depreciating the money we spent a while back. And depreciation is never put in a budget, because it's not cash, so we, we don't put it in there. It'll be in there, and it'll show up as an expense at the end of the year when we do the audit. So that's it for that one.
Riverview Commons.
And Riverview Commons, as you can see, they gave me the hardest ones. Riverview Commons is just money, tax money that we get from the county and the county treasurer's office, and then we send it on to the, to the lender from the original deal, and.
So it's not even really ours?
No. It would be nice if they just sent it direct there, but that isn't how it's arranged to be, so. That's it. No innovation. There's been innovation at Riverview Commons, but it has nothing to do with this.
Okay, the last thing to go over is the schedule of fees. The entire 38-page document was in your packet. One of the hard copies that I provided in your table files, I only printed out pages that have changes. So the building department has a few related to model home part tie-downs, little page language in there, notes. All of this, well, not all, but most of the state liquor licensing fees have changed for about the third time in two years, so there's a lot of changes in those. We changed some of the public records, because standard sizes were, were being charged as kind of extra-large, like printing maps and things like that. So that was done by the planning and zoning department as well. They're the ones who, who use the big plotter and, and print extra-large copies. Can't even read that one, it's red.
Who even knows what a plotter is?
Yeah, it's a giant top here. Aerial utilities and city right-of-division is a new addition. There's some changes in sidewalk and driveway fees. And then one in, in the, in the renovations. Everybody has specific questions on that, the department responsible can probably answer those.
So ask you.
Right, yeah.
I just have a quick process question. So when, besides like a mandate from like state or federal, when does the city start making choices on when to change a fee? Just like market value, or, like, what process do we typically go through, go through when we're changing a fee?
There are a number of different reasons why we might do it. An increase in our real cost, or our fees are offsetting a cost. Like the liquor licensing fees, those come from the state. We charge both city and state. We haven't changed our city fees on those for years, at least as long as I've been here. So there's various reasons. We update the, the schedule of fees once a year in general. If there is, like in, in some cases, we've had in the middle of the year, the state has changed a fee, we don't usually revise our schedule of fees, because that's not our fee. But generally, we do it once a year at budget time, and it's a separate process. We do it by resolution, so that it's not included in the budget ordinance or anything. It's kind of a separate thing. And it can be revised at any time, you know, at council's direction as well.
Okay.
Little Bertie just told me that your mic's not on.
Oh, really?
How does one tell?
I don't know. I think there, that's the viewing public, that couldn't hear you.
Wow, they called in, so that's amazing. So there you have the schedule of fees. We'll bring this back when we approve the budget ordinance, to approve it by resolution. If you have any questions about it, or other suggestions of things that should be changed in the schedule of fees, feel free to let us know.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Ms. Dunn?
The consent agenda includes item A, approval of the, of the disbursements and payroll for August, and B, approval of the minutes of the September 4th, 2018 city council regular meeting. All matters listed under item 12 consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda as presented.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell, both by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Next is public comment and audience participation for items not on the agenda. Anybody have an item? Come up. You want them to sign in?
If you would sign the little sheet right there.
Certainly.
She's a smart lady, I can tell.
I'd like to take this opportunity to remind the council that your elected officials voted into office by us, the people of Fort Morgan. It's your job as elected officials to educate yourselves on the opinions and desires of us, the people of Fort Morgan. We can't always be at the meetings, so that education may have to come from social media, letters to the editor, or visiting with us at social events or at our businesses. Please don't forget who you are and who you represent. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reports by officials and staff.
I don't have anything, Your Honor, but I know a couple of the directors have a few announcements.
Who's this guy?
One, two, and then he keeps coming back.
I just wanted Clint to know that I was prepared to discuss the 1,400 pages of the FEIS tonight, but since the microphones aren't working, I just, we'll save it for another night.
Table it.
Okay, table it, good. Give everybody just a heads up, we're going to have a little bit of a traffic nightmare coming to us on the intersection of Main Street and Platt Avenue. We have a water leak somewhere out in the intersection. We thought we had discovered that it was on the edge, and we tried to do some hydroexcavating and found out that it's coming from out underneath the road surface. So once we get CDOT on board with closures and our traffic control guys and a plan together, we will be probably closing at least two of the lanes for work out on the main in Platt, but it's right there, right in the intersection almost, so. Little bit of a mess, but right now, it's not leaking very bad, but that's for right now, so. But we'll get a press release out once we have more details on that. But I know some people have started to see the water over by the Sabo mat, and that's, we're, we're aware of it, and we're trying to get it handled, so.
What's the recommended detour, I guess?
Until we know just exactly how CDOT is going to ask us to detour, I, yeah, I can't answer that, so.
But we'll put that in their press release.
Yeah, it'll be in the press release.
I mean, more, more importantly, not so much cars, I mean, because
Yeah, it'll be truck traffic.
Two lanes isn't a problem, but with traffic, people may need to realize there may be truck traffic places they're not used to seeing it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bren.
Thank you.
Bren, I'd like to see some yellow tennis shoes, like Ty, though.
I had yellow tennis shoes.
I'll, I'll see where I can get some from. That would be awesome, thanks.
Well, for, for the record, none of you have cute-as-shoes, as Jenny does, though, so. Runs like I've lost control.
Hello. Two quick items. Last night, I appeared in front of the school board to start the discussion on a second school resource officer. No action was taken formally, other than the superintendent requested that he and I meet over the next 30 days and try to formalize this in the sense of putting a little bit more definition into what the second school resource officer will be doing. He's very pro the idea of a second SRO, but he wants to see if we can, in his words, have expansive duties and to make the program a little bit better. And I welcome that discussion, so we'd be glad to do that. It'll slow down our appointment a little bit, if it's approved by the school board, but not very much. So we're looking at about a 30-day review and perhaps some changes there. The second item, I received an email from the chief of police, from the Georgia State Campus Police. In Georgia, there's 26 college campuses policed by about 1,000 police officers. And it was interesting in that they have adopted and were requesting permission to use our assessing and improving operations manual that we put together here at the Fort Morgan Police Department. So our, one of our policies are, in programs, I should say, is being adopted by the state of Georgia statewide, and all the campus police departments there. So that was, I think, something we were quite proud to see done, so I wanted to share that with the council. Thank you.
Nice, thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
I think that's it, Your Honor.
Bids, meanings, and announcements, done.
The city of Fort Morgan is accepting sealed bids for construction of the Fort Morgan SH 52 curb ramps project, federal aid project number TAP M470-01120666, up to 3:30 on October 4th, 2018. We are also accepting sealed bids for construction of the Centerpoint Plaza Development Construction Project, up to 3:00 p.m. on October 8th, 2018. Calendar of meetings, September 24th at 4:30 is the Planning Commission Meeting at City Hall. September 27th at 4 o'clock is a Museum Heritage Foundation Meeting in the Museum Community Room. Then October 2nd at 6:00 p.m. is the city council regular meeting here at City Hall.
Okay. Next on the agenda is an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators. Under CRS Section 24-6-4, 402, 4E, and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Economic incentives. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Lee Sinor, or a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. We will return to executive session.